Oh, yes. And there's the cue. This meeting is being recorded. Oh, thank you so very much.
Didn't say it.
No, didn't. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for August the 3rd, 2021, 6 o'clock meeting, electronic meeting. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number 20-A16, an ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. Opportunities for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on the www.albemoral.org community county calendar when available. Madam, would you call the, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, I will. Mr. Bailey? Mr. Keller?
Present.
Ms. Firehawk? Mr. Carazana? Mr. Randolph?
Present.
Mr. Vivins?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Claiborne?
Present.
There he is.
Thank you.
Well, the roll's been called, and that means we have a, and what the members who said present are here, we have a quorum. Are there any matters not listed on the agenda from the public this evening?
No, sir, there are not.
Thank you very much, public. We have an, we have, does anyone care to pull anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Is there a motion to move the, to approve the consent agenda items? Oh, I see. Is that, are you moving? Daniel has your hand up. Daniel, are you moving?
It was Tim moved, but I'll second.
Tim, were you moving?
I am.
Moving, Daniel, are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
Is there any discussion? Hearing that, madam, would you please call the vote? I wish, I wish counsel that we could just do this by acclamation, but I understand you said we can't do this by acclamation. So, madam, would you call the vote?
Yes, Mr. Claiborne?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Vivins?
Aye.
Mr. Randolph?
Aye.
Mr. Keller?
Aye.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Those have been approved, the consent items have been approved. So, we're going into our public hearings tonight, and we've got a number of ag-forestry items before us. And before we do that, Scott, could you turn yourself, don't turn yourself on, but could you reveal yourself, please? Oh, you're in the forest. Look at you. Look at you, right there in the forest. Could I ask you a question before we move on, just so that, so that it's out there? So, would you explain sort of generally what the nexus between the ag-forest designation is and conservation easements?
Sure. Although both the state-enabled conservation easements and open space easements and the agricultural enforcement districts program are both aimed at generally the same thing, which is rural land conservation in most cases. There is no real tie between them. The enabling authority at the state level is entirely separate. And the programs exist separately of each other. Having said that, there are quite a few parcels in rural Albemarle that are in both, either because they were added to the district some time ago, and the owners have since decided to do a permanent form of conservation easements, or because ownership has changed, or something like that. And people have made other decisions, but the fact that they overlap doesn't really in a legal way tie them together.
Thank you. So that, then I should, I should turn down my, my caution about the article by Allison Brody that was in the progress on July 24th, that basically painted a, not a very good, a good image of conservation easements. I shouldn't be concerned that there's any bleed over into what we're going to discuss.
It's true that there is no bleed over, and I would suggest that you turn down your caution on that article anyway, because I think the headline especially was very misleading.
Thank you so much. That's why I come to somebody who spends time in the woods and can help me turn down my anxiety. And if you haven't seen it, so I don't want anyone to be anxious, but if you haven't seen it, it was in Daily Progress on July 24th by a person called Allison Brody Champion. And so you might, since we've been told that it's okay for us to not be too concerned, you might want to read that, take a look at that. And so I'm not, no. I assume we're going to do each of these separately, sir?
We can, I will present each of them separately. We can do a single public hearing, but we do need to have a separate action for each item.
Okay. So as, then we will go into the AFDs, 2021, 01, Henley-Sugar Hollow addition, and then the NEF Mormon River addition, which is 02, and then 03, which is the Matic Jacobs Run addition, 04, which is the Hatton District Review, and 05, which is the Totier Creek District Review. Sir, please.
Very much. Just need to share my screen. Need to get faster at doing this. Okay. So, thank you. Yes, we have five agricultural enforcement district items tonight, three requested additions, and two district reviews. I'll just go over them briefly and show you the recommendations, and then I'll be happy to answer the questions you have. So the first addition is the proposed Henley addition to the Sugar Hollow District. You can see the district in green there, and the proposed addition in red. And this is a parcel of 19 acres, which is almost entirely made up of important soils and has five development rights. And so therefore is qualified to join the district, and the AFD committee recommended approval of this addition. Item 02 is the NEF property, which is proposed to join the Mormons River District. Mormons River is our largest district, and you can see the extent of it in that map. And again, the proposed addition is in the red. These are three parcels with 111 acres of important soils. Each parcel has multiple development rights, and so is a valid addition to the district. And again, the committee recommended approval. And 03 is the Matic property for Jacob's Run. This property is 69 acres with 51 acres of important soils, one development right, so it's enough to qualify it to join the districts. People have occasionally asked about additions like this one. Why is it so far from the district? Actually, the gap that you see between the Matic parcel in red and the rest of the district in green, a lot of that area was the original core of this district, which is where we measured from. Those parcels have since withdrawn, but the core is the core and does not change. So the way we evaluate these is that, the old way the code read was that they had to be within a mile of the core. Now it says they should be within a mile of the core, but they can be farther if they're agriculturally significant, which they certainly is. So, in either way, in either case, this would be a valid addition to the Jacob's Run district. We have two district reviews. And just to review what these reviews are, every 10 years normally, these districts come up for a check by the Board of Supervisors to ensure that they are still valid and appropriate and sufficiently intact shape that they make sense as a conservation district. It's also the one time that landowners are able to withdraw from the district if they want to by right with no penalty or analysis. It's simply a matter of writing to us and saying, please remove me during this review, and it happens. So this is the Hatton District Review, despite the fact that it says Batesville there, about a third of the way down the page. This is the Hatton District down on James River in the Warren area, 860-acre district, nearly all of which has important soils for agriculture. It's all in the rural areas. We have one withdrawal request of a parcel of 86 acres. It's there in the crosshatch in the middle of the district. The owners have stated that they intend to rejoin the district after dividing off a small parcel. Many of you will remember that these districts prevent the creation of lots of less than 21 acres, except in the case of family divisions. And you can see this property is owned by an LLC, so it by definition can't do family divisions. And in any case, I believe the two or three acre parcel they're proposing to remove wouldn't qualify as a family division anyway, but they hope to do that division and then rejoin with the remaining 84, maybe three acres. There are no parcels in this district that are in the open space tax category. Therefore, we don't have to worry about the recent policy about notifying parcels of potential removal in five years, and this district can be reviewed, can be renewed for 10 years. I can review that policy if anybody has any questions about it. The Totier Creek District, which lies just north of the Hatton District, the area south of Esmond and Porters, and stretching up to the east and north from there toward Keene, is a much larger district, 6,700 acres. Also, for its 10-year review, also has one request to withdraw, which is the crosshatch again up there at the top near Keene. Again, this is a parcel with no parcels that are in the open space tax category. Therefore, you don't have to worry about the possible removals, and the review period is 10 years. And the committee recommended renewal for 10 years with the withdrawals for, well, actually, with the withdrawal for the previous district and the Totier Creek, the withdrawal request came in after the committee meeting. But in any case, the recommendation was for renewal for a 10-year period. So I'll stop there to take questions, and then when you all have had the hearing and are ready, I will put up some motions for you for the individual actions.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions, if you will, yeah, there you go. Other questions for Scott? Corey?
I feel silly for asking this, but could you refresh my memory on what, what is met when it says the number of development rights remaining?
Okay. That's actually a very good question. Back in 1980, when the county went through a comprehensive rezoning, all of the parcels that existed on December 10th of that year were granted five development rights as a one-time thing. So they aren't generated through subdivision. They were granted once and no more are ever created. These are for lots less than 21 acres. So each parcel has those. As parcels are surveyed and subdivided, those rights are tracked on the plats. A commodity that travels around with pieces of the land, and they get divided, two here and three there, as the parcels get subdivided. So it's something that is always tracked through the plotting process for parcels at the courthouse.
Thank you.
Okay, Corey, good. Rick?
Scott, one thing that I noted is, as we look at each one of these districts, we look at them essentially as separate and unique districts. And I thought it would be helpful if in the future you could provide us with some sense out of all the acreage that's in each one of these ag forestry districts, the percentage that is actually in conservation easements. This district in Warren, the Hatton District Review, east of Warren, I should say, constitutes 20.6% of the properties are in conservation easement, which is a very low number and is really the basis of the board's desire to move to an every-five-year review on ag forestry just to try to invigorate the level of conservation easements, so people don't park properties in ag forestry for a period of time, reap the benefits, and then decide to move on. And I know there are tax disincentives that make that more difficult. But still, I was struck by the fact that it's only 20.6%. And then we're going to be looking at the Totier Creek District momentarily, and I'm not trying to take anything away from that, and that's almost 50%. That's 49.7% of all the acreage in that ag forestry district is actually in a conservation easement, which certainly is an improvement over 20.6%. But I do think it would be helpful in the future if you could provide the Planning Commission with a breakdown on where things stand with each one of these districts in the county. So we really have a basis of comparison to know, moving forward, are we really increasing the amount of property that is in conservation easements, or is it decreasing? And actually, then, being able to measure that over a five-year period, I know we don't have enough data yet to really measure that in a meaningful way, but we could begin to track this over a five-year period, both at a planning commission level and then the next level as well. So just a, just a thought for you going forward.
Just so I understand, are you, we do provide the easement acreages for each district that's under-reviewed. Are you saying you'd like to see the easement acreages for all 28 districts each time we do a review of one district?
You know, it might be nice to have an average, something to go by. I'm not asking you to do a complete chart of all 28, but it would be nice to have some basis of comparison. And also, how are we doing as a county versus other counties that have similar ag forestry programs? I mean, we like to think that we're doing well, but we don't have the comparative figures to really weigh that in any meaningful empirical manner.
That's true. I'm sure we could track down the stats to compare our ag four districts overall to other counties without too much trouble. I would like to suggest so that we separate the question of ag four districts and conservation easements. The board's concern in the last few years with, with the ag four district was not whether or not the land could be under easement or was under easement, but whether or not the land was in the open space tax rate and getting a conservation-related tax break, but was not actually land that had the potential to be developed. And so that it was getting a conservation tax rate for doing nothing. They are two separate issues. We do track conservation easements held by the county and all other holders in the county. And if you're interested, I'll be doing a presentation on easements, the county's easement programs, September 15th, the board, so you might want to tune in for that. It's very strange saying that. And so I think it's important to keep the two things separate. It's worth knowing for each district under review how much is under easement, but it's, it's confusing to tangle the two together, and there are a lot of worthwhile stats about easement properties that have nothing to do with the AFDs.
Rick?
Understood. You're absolutely correct. I'm mixing apples and oranges here. But I do think it's useful to know as we go forward, when we're looking in the ag forestry district, how much of that property is really committed legally in perpetuity. Understanding with certain of the holders of those conservation easements, the term in perpetuity is not necessarily in perpetuity, because if they can sell that asset, it's dedicated to them upon death or termination of an agreement, but it doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to actually be in perpetuity. But it, for all purposes of comparison here, it would still be useful to have just some figure to know how we're doing on the conservation end.
Certainly, and we'll keep doing, you know, the small amount we have been doing on reporting on that, and find some consistent ways to give a wider view on that, which is something we need to do anyway.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Others? Tim?
I, I see where Rick is coming from, and I, and I certainly understand from the many discussions that we've had in Ag and Forestry, the point that Scott is making about keeping the two separate, because they really do have different enabling legislation. And one, I think, is actually focused on agriculture and forestry more, and the other one is actually on rural land protection. And there is a nuanced difference here, I think. I do think, though, Scott, it would be, and I support what Rick is saying, if it's not too onerous, and I don't see why it would be. I think what would really be helpful in each of these districts would be to see the amount of land that is protected due to its forestry classification, the amount of land that's protected due to its agricultural, and the amount of land due to its open space qualities. I think that that is really the part that directly relates, because they're the three components that state allows us to do within ag and forestal. And then you consistently do show us, and you've actually done this in some past presentations, I know. And the other part that you've shown us this time, and you've shown us before, but it would be interesting to, and I think this is sort of where Rick is coming from as well. I don't want to speak for Rick, but it would be interesting to see the aggregate number of rights that are under consideration.
Tim, you just broke up considerably there on that big.
Sorry. That's, that's our internet issues in the county. I think it would be interesting to see in aggregate the number of development rights that are, we won't use the word protected, but the number of development rights that are set aside district by the, by the designation. At least they're set aside for the time period that that particular property is within this category.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate having the guidance. We've already been talking about trying to improve our sort of annual reporting on conservation programs in general. So this, this will be, could be folded in with that, and I think it'll be a useful tool.
Other questions? Rick, again?
Tim, good suggestions, all.
So, so the one thing I, I would like to also just, I'd like to sort of add a support to the whole piece of looking at the three different determiner, or the three different types, because I was struck by last week, I don't remember who the person was, but when they made, they made that climate or, yeah, climate presentation to the supervisors. And the number that came, that was used, well, the number that was shared with them was that 4.2% of the agriculture, 4.2% of the rural, of our rural land is actually engaged in agribusiness. And that's, so you can go talk to your client, you talk to your colleague from last week. Because I'm not saying it was you, but it was somebody who made a presentation to the board, and that was a number that I was struck by. And so if we really have all this rural land, but we're not doing a lot of farming on it, that's something that I think, you know, just, could we just bear that out? Could we understand what that means? And I don't necessarily know what would it take to do that, but I was, I was struck by that number, and so that's just my comment on that.
I don't know where that number came from. I'd be interested to find out. It sounds like that's a pretty limited, limited definition of agribusiness, if they're getting a number that low.
That's why I thought it would be interesting that I bring it up with you tonight and see what you can find out.
Yeah. I do really appreciate the commission's interest in these rural area issues. And there's been a long period in the past where the, I think, a lot of the focus on ag four reports was, let's get through this quickly. But if we, you know, want to have more complete reporting on the the stats and the issues facing this district, I'd be happy to look into providing that.
So the other question that I had is, would it be helpful if the Hatton District and the Totier Creek District were combined? Since they seem to share a border, and they seem, they seem to share some boundaries, and I didn't understand. I didn't, I was posing the question if that would be useful, if that could somehow be blended together. But I don't know why they're not, but when I looked at the maps, I didn't understand why we were giving the two different.
When the districts are created, you remember the designations are not, even the names are not created by the county. These are created by volunteer groups of landowners who either individually or through cooperative effort pulled together the 200-acre minimum that's needed to start a district. And so back in the day when we had lots of new districts being formed, it was up to these community groups of cooperating landowners to choose where to put these districts and what to call them. I wouldn't say it really makes any significant difference for the county operations to combine nearby districts. It might cause a lot of confusion for people who identify with the district they're in, because some of these, there is a sort of a community aspect to which district you're in and which one identifies with the area you're in. And so saying we're going to, you know, just combine these two into something else.
Well, it could be, you know, the Hatton, the Hatton Totier District.
Right, yeah.
Which is then preserves everyone's name.
I don't think we gain much by doing that.
Yeah, so you don't get, as long as you don't gain much, it just seems that it's got another district that you have to keep track of, as opposed to some consolidating them and having one district, having one fewer districts to deal with. But I, it's not my, your gig, not my gig.
I think it's half a dozen in sexually.
Okay, cool. Yes, Tim?
Just, Julian, I think, you know, it's, it's again, the enabling legislation for both of these, and the way a district is constructed and built out from a center point and an originating element. So I think that there would have to be a change in the Virginia's enabling legislation if you wanted to do that. And maybe you want to talk to council, and maybe they want to put it on their priority list or not. But I think that that's really it. And in terms of the agribusiness, I think that whoever did this within the county, and I guess it's Charles's job and maybe Andy's job to, as well as Scott, to speak with the, the climate person who we're going to see very soon. Maybe we'll have an opportunity to bring this up as well. But there's a definition for the forestry, the horticulture, and there is no way that that figure can be accurate, given the amount of land that is in pine plantation in the county that we all see on a daily basis. Now, there might be conservation issues that we would challenge because of the state, the way the state manages that in terms of runoff and hydrology. But in terms of agribusiness and reported, I think that very easily we could go to the last ag census for the Commonwealth of Virginia and see that that is not an accurate figure whatsoever.
Well, what I can do is stir up some dust, and so I think it's, I think it's helpful for us to sort of, you know, validate that number.
Yeah.
I think that's a good number to validate. Thank you, Tim. Anything else for Scott before we open it for public comment? Then I will open it for a public, for public, public hearing.
All right, we have Neil Williamson. Neil, please state your name and association, and your three minutes will start as soon as you try to start speaking.
Good evening. Neil Williamson with the Free Enterprise Forum. Former Secretary of Agriculture Todd Haymore often said agriculture is Virginia's biggest business by far. I take huge issue with the number of 4.5% agribusiness. I fear that this is something to create a wedge in agribusiness of certain types. With more than 95% of the landmass in rural areas, this is not parkland, and too often we think it is. This is workable land that people are on tractors working every day. When you look at the ag-forestry districts, these districts came together because landowners came together, and they brought these districts forward volunteering to give up property rights for a period of time. I also take issue with the idea that ag-forestry districts aren't worth as much as conservation easements because they're not in perpetuity. The land is protected. It is regulated. The question for the Planning Commission is how much land in this time of needing affordable housing and lack of development area land, is the right amount of land to be perpetually protected? Is the Planning Commission ready to take a look at that? And perhaps even look at how much would be appropriate to be perpetually protected? Is the planning commission ready to take a look at that and perhaps even look at how much would be appropriate to be perpetually protected? Perhaps even purchased through a PDR program? Almaro has a very solid one with the ACE program versus uh having someone voluntarily give it up. As I've mentioned to this group many times, there is no public hearing for a conservation easement. Yet every five or 10 years, depending upon district, these landowners have to go through a public hearing process. Why? What is the purpose? Part of it is the restrictions that allow them not to develop, not to subdivide a small parcel, as you see with the LLC that's in the Hatton Ferry District. Development rights that are set aside have value, and they're giving those rights up. It's important to recognize the rural area community is doing a great deal to support the rural area, both through agribusiness and through voluntary conservation easements and voluntary ag forestal business. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Are there others, madam?
No, there is not.
Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to us. And Mr. Clark, Scott, if you would sort of guide us through how you'd like to, or there are other comp, if you'd like to make comments. And commissioners, if you have other observations. You're you're muted. You you're among, there you go.
How long have we been doing this? Okay, um, just need to share my screen. I'll put these motions up. I don't have any further comments, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, do you have any additional questions? Comments? Okay, then uh would someone care to make a motion? I need you to unmute yourself because we're in this pro, we're in this, oh, I know, I can do it this way. It's okay. I can do it this way. There we go. I can see everybody again. But anyone care to move? An item.
I can't see everyone, but I'm willing to make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny.
Um, I'm to record approval of AFD 2021 01 Hymn for Hollow addition.
Is there a second? They're seconded by Tim? Is there any further discussion? Okay, please, madam, would you call the roll on this?
Yes, Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
We we need you, we need you unmute, Rick. You cannot remove it. Okay, can counsel, can he shake his head vigorously? Or or um, uh, Charles, can you unmute him first? There you go. Now you now you may speak, Rick.
Hi.
Hi. Now, now you can go.
Thank you, Charles.
Hi.
Miss Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's ask, can we go to the next one? Someone care the next uh? Uh, there we are. Do I have a motion for the Neff Mormon River Edition? Rick, did I see your hand go up? I see somebody's hand go up.
I'll go, or Tim goes.
Moved by Tim, seconded by Rick. Is there any further discussion?
Clarify what the motion is, please, because I I don't know at this point of the record, doesn't reflect at this point whether it's to recommend approval or recommend this.
It's recommended. Uh, Tim, would you like to speak to that?
Should I read both one and two? From the screen?
No, because they're mutually exclusive.
Just one, just one or two.
Of course, of course they are.
I do, I do. One or two.
Recommend approval of AFD 2021 00002 Neff Mormon Mormon River Edition.
And it was seconded by by Rick. Is there any further discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Miss Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next one, sir. So we have your Forest the Magic Jacobs Run Edition. Would someone like uh move by Dan? Oh, Danny, which one are you moving?
I move to recommend approval of AFD 2021 00003 Maddox Jacobs Run Edition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jenny. Any further discussion? Uh, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Miss Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move into uh the Hatton District Review. I think, yes. Is there is there a motion before us for this one? Someone? Rick, would you like to move?
Uh, Karen not being here, I move to recommend renewal of the Hatton District for a 10-year period with a requested withdrawal.
Is there a second? Seconded by Tim. Is there further discussion? Madam, would you call the roll?
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Mr. Moore, I'm sorry, Miss Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we move to the next one, please? Would someone care to speak to or make a motion for the Tocia Creek District? Mr. Randolph.
I move to reckon recommend renewal of the Toddier Creek District for a 10-year period with a requested withdrawal.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Vivins.
Hi.
Miss Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Thank you.
You. Like we moved them all forward, Mr. Whoop, there he is. Scott, did you get what you need from that?
Thank you very much.
All right, don't don't be, yes, Tim.
I I would just like to uh again, call to everybody's attention, the agricultural census, which is done every so many years. Uh, five-year updates. The last one that's relevant for us is 2017. It's uh N A S S dot U S D A dot gov. And it actually shows the numbers of acre in different types of farmland, like grassland for pasture and different kinds of cultivation. And it's available historically way, way back to times that we are very uncomfortable with for some of the items that show up in the agricultural censuses.
Would you give us that again, please?
Yes, N as in Nancy, A as in Anne, S as in Sam, S as in Sam dot U S D A dot gov.
Thank you very much.
In particular, uh, you want to go to the tables and table eight in particular speaks to farms, land and farms, value of land and buildings, etc. But there's also ones for what we're producing. You can see how the fruit's really gone were high with apples and now are high with grapes, those sorts of things over time.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. So we will move on to our uh hearing other comments on that piece on the I force a piece. We're going to move on to SP 2021 06, the Ivy Landfill Solar Facilities. Scott, could we have your report, please? Oh, and and also there's a new person who's arrived on our screens.
Uh, yes, this is a public hearing for the Ivy landfill solar facility and Ms. Amberly Young from Community Power Group is here to speak for the applicants. I think she has some for colleagues with her as well. There you go. So this is, I believe, the third of the special use permit requests we've had in the county for solar energy generation facilities in the rural areas. This one is unlike the others in that the proposal is to locate this facility, which has about 15 acre, would have about 15 acres of generating panels on top of the existing Ivy landfill by the Solid Waste Authority. So the proposal includes three separate areas of photovoltaic panels on top of the capped landfill, a total of 3.11 megawatts generating capacity, occupying only 15 acres of the 300 acre site. Again, built on a closed capped landfill and with a design approach that essentially sits on the surface rather than being dug into uh having a foundation posts underground like you've seen with the previous two applications that have come in. Refresh everyone's memory, this is the site outlined and written is the material, the landfill, the materials utilization center with the entrance uh on Dick Woods Road down here. And of course, bordering uh I 64 here to the north and Broadax Road to the west. This is a portion of the uh conceptual plan for the proposed facility. Gives a pretty good sense of scale, I think. The entrance and the buildings a lot of you are probably probably familiar with. And the intake area for uh household waste down here. And on capped sections of the landfill, the blue areas are where the panels would be. Uh, you can see there's the central road that comes through the landfill for access and maintenance. And there's a couple of things to point out. These inverter boxes that are located here and here. Uh, those are the converters that take the DC power from the panels and help get it ready for AC distribution across the power lines. And as you'll see, those are again grouped toward the center of the uh of the landfill area. And that's important because those are the main generators of noise impacts from these solar facilities. Just to zoom in a bit, this is the northern section of the conceptual plan. And again, you can see the inverter boxes. And the there's a section of above ground conduit uh running over the uh surface of the landfill, because again, this is capped landfill and can't be excavated or dug into. So this is running over the surface. And then the southern portion that's closer to the office buildings and the intake area, there's two more areas of panels in the uh area where the power coming from the panels is connecting to the existing transmission lines that come through the site. So I will just run through a quick summary of the special use permit uh consideration criteria from zoning ordinance from this use. Uh, first item is substantial detriment to adjacent properties. Under noise impacts, we've generally found that these inverters are compared to residential AC units. Uh, in this case, those inverters are going to be about 1500 feet or more from existing dwellings. And uh, once you get that distance from an inverter that's producing something in order of 60 to 70 decibels, you're well under 10 decibels by the time you get to those uh, those nearby dwellings. So it's a scarcely noticeable level of of noise. And again, that's only happening during the daytime because the panels don't operate at night. So this is not considered to be a substantial detriment of the nearby properties. As far as visual impacts go, the applicants did extensive work on visibility of the panels and glare and glint produced by the panels on surrounding properties on the surrounding roads. And and of course, Interstate 64 is an entrance corridor, so that was a special concern. Although the initial analysis that took only topography into account showed that there could be visibility from surrounding properties. Um, the fact that there is such an extensive amount of vegetation, both on the site and in the surrounding site, meant that there were no significant visual impacts found. Uh, the plant and glare study again indicated no impacts on roads or dwellings. The applicants can, I'm sure, talk about this in more detail. Uh, harmony with the purposes and intent of the chapter, this is can be a challenging item for a utility generation site. However, while this site is in the rural areas, it is already an existing public facility landfill. It has no real potential for future agricultural or forestry use on any time scale that we can expect. Um, it is located in the watershed of the South Fork River and a reservoir. However, again, it is on an existing public use site. And it is putting impervious panels on top of an impervious landfill cap, so the area of impervious surface is not really changing, would not change. Uh, the character of the runoff might change to some minor degree, and that can be handled during the site plan review. Overall, however, it's not a significant change. Limited service delivery uh is not an issue here. And uh conservation of natural scenic and historic resources. Um, again, I'll just repeat what I said in the previous slide as far as uh visibility goes. Um, again, this is a landfill, so there's no, there are no significant natural resources on the site to be impacted. All right, uh, public health, safety and general welfare. The real issue of substance here is just having an appropriate emergency response plan for any uh fires or other emergencies associated with one of these facilities. As we have with the previous special use permits, we are recommending a condition of approval for the applicants or the site owners to supply training to the Department of Fire Rescue. And uh, VDOT also reviewed this for road impacts and found it acceptable. There's no real traffic generation for the site. And once it's in operation, there of course is for construction. It's fairly brief, and this is again, only a 15 acre uh panel facility. So that would be a temporary use. Parking would all be accommodated within the site. And after that, there would be nothing generated as far as traffic except for occasional maintenance visits. Well, so consistency with the comprehensive plan. Um, the plan does say that the county should promote conservation and efficient use of energy resources. So allowing this kind of renewable energy source is consistent with that. Uh, natural resources section of the comp plan is very focused on water resource protection. But given that this site is already disturbed, already impervious, there are minimal impacts or changes to water quality from this proposal. And uh, both the natural resources section and our recently adopted Climate Action Plan encourage the county to support renewable energy sources, which this would do. So we felt that it was consistent with the comprehensive plan. Wanted also to mention that beyond the special use permit, as a utility facility providing power to the public grid, this proposal is subject to a compliance with the comprehensive plan review by state law. And we do this for any such uh generating facility like this. And uh, given comments from the previous slide, we would recommend that the commission find it in a court. So in summary, we found three favorable factors. A source of renewable power generation, compliance of the comprehensive plan, and no change to the already impervious site in terms of uh its runoff characteristics, didn't find unfavorable requests. And uh, recommending approval of the special use permit with these conditions, I realize these are pretty small. So I'll have to go over any particular ones you have questions about. And on the next slide, I have a recommendation for approval of the uh, compliance with the comp plan review, and I have some motions after that, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Are there questions for Scott at this particular point? Corey.
The uh, it makes recommendation, I'm sorry, it makes reference to uh engineer and a decommissioning. Yeah, it makes recommendation, I'm sorry, it makes reference to engineer in the decommissioning piece of this. Does that need to say professional engineer? I said the word engineers used very loosely. Does that need to have who are professionals to indicate that need to be registered in Virginia or have a seal or anything like that?
That's a change. And we hadn't actually discussed that. Uh, I suppose that's a change that we could make fairly easily. Given that the plan would have to be reviewed and approved by the county attorney and the county engineer, uh, I would think that they would expect that anyway. But certainly if the commission wanted to recommend that, we could make that minor change to the condition.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Rick.
Scott, I have one question. I was not clear in this proposal where it says on page two, the solar panels would be installed on frames that rest on surface mounted supports rather than the typical underground concrete support blocks. Uh, my recommendation would be when this goes to the board that you have much more explanation as to what surface mounted supports look like. How they're configured, uh, the material that they're made of, how they are actually secured to the ground, given uh, what hap- transpired in Scottsville, the town of Scottsville last week with a microburst. Um, where all of a sudden you have really intense winds, heavy rain. You know, I immediately thought as I read through this application, well, what happens if a microburst hit the site? And how would these frame go ahead and hold these panels against intense high winds? Um, and or, for example, in a derecho, uh, which can fell oak trees. So I think it would be useful when this goes to the board to have some diagrams and further explanation about what the surface mounted supports actually look like. Just a recommendation.
Sure, yeah, and I appreciate that. Um, I myself am not a professional or any other kind of engineer, so my description may have been somewhat insufficient there, but uh, fortunately Ms. Young is here to speak for the applicants, and I'm sure she can describe that in more detail. And then if what she's able to show, you all feel should be boosted before the board presentation, we can certainly take care of that.
Okay, Rick. Anyone else? Tim, you're unmuted. No, okay. So I have a question that perhaps that Scott, I imagine that that you'll defer to community, to the community power group. So on their website, on their, on their website, there's two things that I'm interested in. One is their website, so this is a two mega, mega, megawatts power um, project, which is fine. And they show a layout on their, on their website for this particular project here. And so I'm trying to, I would like some reconciliation between what we're seeing and what they're putting out on web. And then, and then the other thing here, uh, I'd like some discussion around is on their website, they show gas vents with ten, ten foot clearances. I assume that's because the, the site is off, is off gassing as it, as it matures and lives out, it's gonna have to off gas. So if it's gonna off gas, I want some idea of how flammable those, uh, those gases are. And since we're not necessarily grounding or, or how are they gonna ground those structures so that they're struck by lightning? We also don't have some sort of, some, some combustible event up there uh, on Dick Woods Road. So those are my, those are my two. And I feel, I, I understand if you need to defer to, to Ms. Young. But my one thing was on their website, they're looking, it's a very different, it's not very different, but it's a slightly different. It's one mega, it's one mega, mega watt. Less than what we're, what we're talking about tonight. So I want to be clear what we're talking about. This is the public facing piece of their, of the organization says too. And the, and the, and the uh, the project plan that we have coming to us tonight is very, and I want some conversation around how are we gonna ensure that this is not going to become a flammable, a flammable mountain if in fact there's, there's takes place there.
Uh, yes, thank you. I uh, I have not seen the, the version on the website, all of the conditions that you have in front of you tonight. Uh, referring to the fifteen acre three point one megawatt plan. So, but I'm sure Ms. Young can address that. Um, I share your concern about the uh, fire hazard from the methane offgassing of the landfill, which of course is, is managed by the, the waste authority. Uh, as I understand it, that safety standard is reviewed and imposed by the Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, when the proposed facility goes through their review, which generally follows the local review. Um, and uh, what I heard from, from Ms. Young in our conversation was the same as what you found is that there are will be dehumidated offsets from the areas where the, the methane is being extracted from the landfill to ensure that um you, there isn't an immediate fire hazard. Uh, I don't have an answer on the grounding question, but I sent this, I'm gonna address that.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Just got other other questions before we go to the applicant? Daniel.
Just curiosity, kind of along the same lines, the the um, two of the main kind of power lines are above ground, which typically every, I, I understand this is a no till site, but those are typically buried a lot of times for safety reasons and others. So just, as she's discussing, how, how robust are these above ground conduits or how are they marked to prevent? Not that I think that, actually, I don't know. I don't know what the landfill uses of equipment or maintenance is that they could strike one of these above ground lines and, and what, what kind of safety uh, considerations are there around those for human safety if they were to be struck by a piece of equipment or persons of that nature?
Yeah, I don't think we've seen in the application a specific design for that overground conductor. I'm sure Ms. Young again can discuss the details of that.
You're, Daniel, you okay? Waiting till we get to Ms. Young? Is anyone else?
Yeah, I was directing it. I figured I was directing this young. I figured it would get all the, thanks.
Uh, anything else for, for Scott before we invite the applicant to? Thank you. Ms. Young, welcome to Alamo County's uh, planning commission meeting. Uh, we turn it to you and I, I'm sure you've been briefed on how much time you have now, so I won't do that now, but we'll, we'll let you go forward and, and, and tell us what you need to tell us.
Uh, thank you. Yes, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Amber Lee Young. I'm a senior project manager with the Community Power Group. I'm just gonna show my screen really quickly. Oops, I'm sharing button. Um, is that visible to you all?
Yes, we can, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you very much to the planning commission and the community development staff, as well as any members of the public for taking your time to review our application tonight. Just a quick note about our company. Um, we are, uh, Community Power Group is based out of Maryland. Um, we have about two gigawatts of solar in operation or development across the United States. We have a strong focus in the mid Atlantic. Um, all of our staff is located in Virginia or Maryland. And we also have extensive experience working on projects on landfills. Um, we have a portfolio of projects, um, including five different sites, about seventy acres in Maryland, as well as another portfolio in Massachusetts. So we've, uh, we're very familiar with sort of the technical and design implications of locating on landfills. Um, and are very excited to work closely with the Rivana Solid Waste Authority as well as DEQ on some of those matters, but definitely want to speak to some of your questions. So I'll get to that just in a minute. Um, but as Scott already summarized, um, our project is comprised of uh, three proposed solar facilities, each approximately one megawatt of alternating current. Um, we, uh, though the parcel itself is over three hundred acres, um, our project will be about or including the panels as well as the interconnection area will be, is supposed to be about fifteen acres of that area. And the electricity that will be produced by the project, um, will go, uh, will not be credited to any specific meter within the area, but will go into the distribution grid to provide clean energy to nearby homes and businesses. And this is part of compliance with the Virginia Clean Economy Act that was passed in twenty twenty, um, which seeks, uh, or which directs, um, uh, utilities such as Dominion to procure solar, particularly on previously developed sites, as well as, um, a large amount throughout the state. Um, so just a little bit more about the site. Um, the Ivy Material Utilization Center was, uh, began its landfill operations in the nineteen sixties. Um, and it was required, acquired by the County of Albemarle and the City of Charlottesville a little bit after that time. And it operated for several decades before its final closure and capping in two thousand and two. And so the site has an active solid waste permit with Virginia DEQ and goes through extensive monitoring today. And so Community Power Group, um, was fortunate enough to win, uh, an RFP with Rivana Solid Waste Authority in twenty seventeen for this opportunity to develop these solar facilities. And so we work very closely with the folks at Rivana, um, and really appreciate their support of this project. Um, so Scott's already sort of gone over this, uh, design for the project. So it's, um, three, uh, one megawatt solar facilities that will be installed on fixed tilt racking. Um, and as you already discussed, there'll be several inverter units, uh, placed throughout the site, but we take efforts to locate those as interior to the site as possible in order to minimize any potential noise impacts as well as to make them easily accessible for maintenance. Because, uh, we make a commitment to, uh, be very extremely careful about no penetrations to the landfill caps. Um, all of the conduit and I'll, I'll definitely, or I'll show you a picture of what this looks like in just a second, but sort of describing it. All of the conduit coming from these inverter panel locations will be above ground, um, up until the point where we get to the sun, a southern part of the site when we're able to underground that in order to cross this driveway and reach our interconnection point for, which is a Dominion utility pole existing on site. Um, took of this red area right here. So this is a photo of an existing landfill facility that we constructed. I, I believe it's one of the ones in Massachusetts. And so here you can see the panels are installed on fixed tilt racking, which is very common for a ground mounted solar facility. But instead of driving pile post into the ground, um, they are simply, um, attached or surrounded by a concrete ballast. And so it sits entirely above the, above the ground and there are no ground penetrations needed. Um, this, this is also actually a common practice on rooftop projects where you're not able to penetrate the roof membrane. And so even at seventy or eighty feet in the air, they're able to provide enough concrete ballast in order to secure those cup, there's panels to a roof surface. And so we're sort of using the same strategy here where we're, um, applying enough concrete to the base of the system so that it won't uh, shift or uplift during wind conditions. It's a little difficult to see in this, in this picture, but on the, right here, you can see a little bit of a conduit run that's coming off of the uh, the panels. And that's what will be running over the capped landfill areas down to the um, southern end of the site. And so it's, it'll be a metal conduit, um, sitting on top of a piece, a piece of concrete that will be spaced throughout the conduit. And then beneath that will be a material, um. So if there's any shifting, there won't be any disturbance to the ground. Um, but that's an example of what that will look like. And so um, we haven't gone through very detailed engineering of what, uh, the exact placement of that conduit, but that will be part of our, um, site plan development as well as our permit with Virginia DEQ in order to, um, protect the landfill cap and also make DEQ as well as Rivana very aware of where all our material is going um, and what the operating conditions will be um, in order to protect the cap as well as to provide Rivana with, um, um, knowledge of that. And so as Scott mentioned, we prepared, um, a glare study, a glare, a glint and glare study for this project in order to assess the potential impact for motorists along I sixty four to the north as well as Dick Woods Road to the south. So we utilized a software tool called For Solar, which is developed by the Department of Energy and the Federal Aviation Administration um, to assess the, uh, potential for glint and glare of a solar facility throughout the entire year. So a year of sun, sun positions as well as the specific parameters of our project. And so for these routes you see here, um, and the specific parameters of our, our project, um, no glare was predicted. Um, we also, um, pay close attention to what the potential noise output of this facility will be. And so as Scott discussed, um, this, the typical noise output of a solar inverter is between fifty five to sixty five decibels, which is similar to a dishwasher or a residential air conditioning unit. Um, and that's when you're standing right up against it a couple of feet away. And so as, um, you cover a wide, or a wider distance away, that sound dissipates. And so because the closest residents to this facility are over a thousand feet away, the noise could be expected to be less than ten decibels at any kind of distance like that. And that doesn't take into account any vegetation or other obstructions that may be in the way between that noise produced and the observer, um, in their homes. So we, we expect the noise from these inverters to be much less than current road traffic or what could be expected on the material utilization center from their typical activity as a recycling center during the day. Um, and then as, as Scott mentioned, um, the inverters go to standby mode during the night when no power is being produced. So some next steps for this project, um, after, or if approved, um, during the special use permit review, um, would go to site plan amendment um, and development. And that's where we'll do, as mentioned, additional stormwater review in order to determine any potential impact from the facility on the existing stormwater facilities on site. Um, we'll also be going through a DEQ landfill closure permit amendment process, in which case we'll review the project as well as the particular and specific design parameters from detailed design documents in order to, uh, determine whether there's any potential in, in impact for the landfill cap and will be required to address those impacts before moving to construction. Um, they'll also address the list, the, the risk of the project to the current landfill byproducts, which do include leachate as well as landfill gas. Um, there are active and passive, uh, gas vents on the site. Um, over half of the capped facilities are construction waste as opposed to municipal or household waste. So that does produce less methane than what you might expect from a landfill that's entirely residential waste. But we are very aware of the, um, methane production of the site. And so we'll be doing detailed surveying of the location of those vents, calculations about the gas output, and then we'll be locating our, 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 um, equipment and facilities, oh, um, an acceptable distance away from those vents. And then we'll also be pursuing, um, final building permits and electrical permit before we move to construction. Um, and so currently our, our projects are also under study for interconnection with Dominion. And that process can take a long time and there are potential for delays. And we're also undergoing procurement with Dominion and so that could lead to some delays, but, um, our expectation and hope is that this project will complete its permitting by the end of twenty twenty one and move into construction, um, by the end of the spring in twenty twenty two. And the typical construction period for a ground mounted solar facility of this size is about two to three months. Um, only a couple of weeks of that, uh, time period will be the heavy lifting in terms of receiving panels and materials to the site and, um, using a forklift to move those panels to the construction area. That process is actually very quick because it's pretty formulaic. And then the, um, remainder of that time period would be dedicated to wiring as well as interconnection, um, at the utility pole. And I, I also note here in this diagram, um, that some of the existing paved areas that were you able to utilize for construction parking and staging, uh, during that timeframe. So that's just a few quick notes about the project. Um, I hope I answered some of your questions, but really welcome any more that you have and really appreciate your time.
Questions for the other, Tim, please. Thank you, Ms. Young. Tim?
Thank, thank you very much for this presentation. It's really interesting for us to, uh, see your approach, um, due to the fact that the contours have been capped, that there won't be, there can't be land disturbance. And so you have developed these above ground boots, I guess, if we want to call that the, um, legs, so to speak, would fit in. My question is, do you then have the length of the legs vary so that you can keep the same angle or inclination of the solar panels? In other words, if the contour is dropping down across fifteen panels or whatever are connected and it drops down ten feet, does that mean that there will be shorter legs at one end and taller legs at another end?
Um, yes, we do use, um, a variable height design, um, in terms of the actual height of the post, but it it won't, I, I don't believe it'll differ more than maybe a foot at the largest extreme. Um, so we attempt to maintain a twenty five degree, uh, tilt throughout the preponderance or throughout the totality of the project. And so I think there'll only be, I believe there'll only be minimal differences in the tilt or, excuse me, in the post supporting the racking. And then the overall height of the facility won't be any higher than nine to ten feet.
Thank you. And so the follow up to that is, um, obviously you're doing projects where you don't have to do this kind and you do. obviously you're doing projects where you don't have to do this kind and you do where for the in a layman's terms, you plant the posts, the support posts in the ground, most likely again with a concrete in concrete under the surface. Is there a significant cost differential for you in in the one approach versus the other?
Yes, there is a bit of a cost difference here and it does create additional costs. I think I believe the figure is maybe five to six cents per kilowatt, which is can add a significant cost to a project, but we've worked that into our proposal and are working that through with Dominion, but it does create a slightly additional cost. However, because this project is fixed tilt, there are no motors associated with it. That would be part of a single access tracking facility. And so there are savings met into, so it's a bit of a give and take.
Well, thank you very much. This is actually, I'm actually asking these questions for future projects and and to think about past projects that we've encountered. Maybe not for you because you're doing a lot of this, but for us, this is a learning process. We have, many of us had significant concerns about topographic and contour manipulations of sites that in theory are going to return be returned to their existing or have the potential to be returned to their existing conditions in the future. And I think that what you're showing us is an opportunity for an alternative that may provide a different approach and a different way we might think about some of these in let's say in flood plains adjacent to flood plains where there are hydrologic issues. So thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation and your expertise.
Thank you. And I guess to that point, that reminded me about the question regarding our website and the updated site plan. So thank you very much for pointing that out. The reason that the plan has changed a little bit since what is shown on our website is we identified the areas where it is as minimal the slope as possible and are locating the panels on a flat high area. And so that's why there's a bit of a change in the site plan since our first design.
Great.
Thank you for your question.
I have four questions for you, Ms. Young. Thank you also for your presentation. The first question is, I want to talk about methane vents. Do you have to move any of the existing methane venting system that is in place currently at the site?
No, we will not.
Okay, number two, the Northwest quadrant that you is shown on your attachment two and that you showed us the overhead photograph is not receiving any panels. Curious as to why you're not putting any panels in that Northwest quadrant. You've covered the Northeast, the Southeast and the Southwest, but clearly omitted is the Northwest quadrant. Can you give us an idea as to why you're not putting anything there, proposing to put anything there?
Sure, because yeah, we would love to maximize the benefit for Rivana in terms of the income that would come from this project to offset their maintenance costs. And so typically we would look to maximize the area that is feasible. However, with this site, we found that the available area in the Northwest quadrant was minimal due to the all higher slope in that area. And additionally, the way that the Virginia Clean Economy Act was drafted, they only procure facilities up to three megawatts. And so we essentially selected the three areas on the site that presented the best topography and available area in order to get to that three megawatt cap.
Okay, wonderful. But that doesn't rule out in the future, you might potentially find it cost effective to go ahead and engage with the Northwest corner. A question about the construction staging that you showed us, the timeline. Will that have any impact on Rivana's recycling operations which occur on the weekends?
No, it will not. We spoke with them about the most acceptable areas to place that equipment and they directed us to that point and felt that it wouldn't affect their operations.
Okay, final question is about cost, which is where you ended your discussion with Commissioner Keller. And wouldn't it be the case that though this may be more expensive for you to actually install, when it comes time and we're looking out thirty, forty years, when all of us, except for you, Ms. Young, the rest of us may be pushing up daisies at that point. I wondered about the cost there, will it not actually be easier for you to decommission the site when it comes time to tear it down because you only have concrete footings that need to be detached and then they have to be lifted taken out and the concrete broken down, but you're not having to pull them out of the ground, which is a much more labor and equipment intensive process.
Yes, thank you. That's a very good point. And I believe you, I think you're very much correct in that the decommissioning of this facility will be much simpler than other facilities where there have been extensive pilings into the ground. And also they'll be, because we aren't proposing any land disturbance besides at the southwest point of the of the site where we're doing the interconnection, there'd be less restoration needed on our part in terms of moving any ground. So yes, that's a great point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Question, Corey.
Like my fellow commissioners have already said, thank you for your expertise tonight. And this question is more for my knowledge. This is still a new project type for me. But I was curious if, are there any disadvantages like structurally for this installation method versus, you know, your traditional concrete footings? And I'm asking mainly just thinking through what climate change is doing. We're seeing more natural disasters. Hurricanes stretching out this far is not uncommon now. Like you mentioned, wind uplift, do we still get the same, you know, kind of structural characteristics with this approach? What disadvantages are there?
The only disadvantage here is a slightly reduced production potential because that's the biggest advantage of going to a tracking system where the panels tilt and follow the path of the sun is that you're able to get the greatest amount of solar energy production from the site. And so that's the biggest, I guess, if you were to say a disadvantage, that would be the biggest one for us. But from a structural standpoint, I don't believe there would be because be any disadvantage from this from a structural standpoint, because we we have to do a significant amount of calculations in order to ensure that there is significant amount of ballast. And it is a common, as I mentioned, a common practice for rooftop systems as well. So I wouldn't expect any significant disadvantage there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So a follow-up on Commissioner Claiborne's point. Does that mean then that it is your company's feeling that when there is this type of installation, there can't be a movable panel?
I haven't yet seen a landfill application of a movable panel. Just because that would create an additional weight and then the motors themselves make introduce additional complexity in terms of making sure there are emergency situations around methane because of an active motor and the chemicals involved in that. So I haven't seen any any racking systems for landfill that had been developed from a tracker, incorporating tracker technology, but it's not to say that it wouldn't be possible in the future.
Then a quick, a quick follow-up would be, has your company done this type of installation in a non landfill place? Have you encountered an environmental situation where either county or jurisdictional policies preclude the manipulation of land, the removal of topsoil, whatever? And therefore you've needed to do this type of installation above ground?
Yes, I don't believe we've encountered any environmental or code-related reasons that have prevented us from doing a tracking system. Typically, the reason that we would, we have done fixed tilt systems on a non landfill application. And the reason that we may choose to do that is because single access trackers require long straight rows that are oriented east to west. And so if there's not, if the site is maybe kind of a weird squiggly shape or there's not an opportunity to install these sort of long corridors and we would choose a fixed tilt system. But I don't believe unless it was a brownfield or another site or another landfill site like this, I don't believe there have been any environmental or code reasons to choose one system or another.
So just a final clarification. Do you know of cases where this above-ground boot system, for lack of a better term, has been used to support keeping the existing land contours and you have had the movable tracking system as well?
No, I don't think, I've never seen a system that has these these concrete boots and is also tracking.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So just before we go and open to go to a public, to see if the public wants to has any questions or comments for on this. My only question that I have is so I know you're aware, we've had earthquakes here. So that's, you know, you're aware that you're doing that kind of work. And so while in a number of the other projects that we have, they've been in in places on sites that didn't have some of the peculiar aspects of this site, just for instance, there wasn't any methane gas. And so I noticed on your, in your, in your report to us or your portos on page five, you said you're not, there will not be any onsite staff. And so then that led to my question, since we've got these peculiar situations here, we have some things that might have some higher risk to it. Where will the staff be and how quickly can the staff get to the site if they should go forward from the supervisors in the event that there's an issue? So where would they be coming from?
Yes, that's a great question. And so there are onsite staff that Rivana employs for the maintenance of the site. And so they will be there, we will be doing training with them in order to help them visually detect if there are any issues. But from a specific solar maintenance situation, we typically have a maintenance crew visit the site one to two times per year. And we would be employing or creating a long-term maintenance contract with a local company. And so there are a number of maintenance companies for solar facilities in the greater Albemarle Charlottesville region. And because of the large amount of systems that are being proposed. And so a person, a specific solar technician would be able to reach the site very quickly. As well as an electrician or any specialist technician that would be needed.
And part of, if I kept an extent, so part of the training, I understand there's a, there's an obligation to train the first responders. I assume that part of that training would be with your, your on-the-ground consultant or the, or the service agency that you get with that. And you bring everyone together so that there would be a unified approach or unified understanding of what some of the issues that might present itself in this particularly unique, unique site.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions before we see if there's, if there's people from the public who care to comment? Okay. Madam, do we have anyone in the public who has his or her hand raised?
We do not at this time.
Well, isn't that something? Then Ms. Young, do you have any closing comments before we bring this back to, for the commissioners to discuss and to take action?
I don't. Just to say, thank you again very much for your approval of your application as well as or your, sorry, your review of our application as well as your questions. Yeah, I really appreciate the discussion tonight. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much. We've enjoyed it. So thank you. Commissioners, comments, observations. Daniel, please.
Yeah, I think I started saying, I think this is a great project. I think it's awesome to see solar, you know, land that is a brownfield like this that has really no other practical use be be able to find a creative way to apply solar to it. I think the the comment I would just make, I was just down last week at North Carolina to if, for those that don't know, is the second largest adopter of solar in the United States, behind California. And on a per capita basis is greater than California of solar installations. You know, Virginia currently has about five hundred and fifty megawatts installed. They have fifty-two hundred megawatts planned for installation, given a lot of these different legislative facts. I would just, from a planning commission standpoint, one comment in meeting with the director at the North Carolina Clean Energy Tech on North Carolina State's campus, who has been doing this for a while and tracking this, given North Carolina's adoption of it, was he, he's, his point was that the value is the connection to the grid. And that they have seen already in some of their legacy sites upgrading panels to newer technology because they're more, they have better production capabilities. And so he's actually assumed, and this is his, his take, but he's assumed that once something goes into this land use category and special use, that it's likely to stay there for longer than thirty years. Because the the cost and the ability to get into grid and the substation, the movement of the electricity is very caught is the, is the expensive driver of a project like this. It's not the individual cost of a panel. So I just bring that up to the commission for your all's consideration as we think about more and more solar coming in and what lands it goes on and that it's likely could, has the potential to lock up that land for greater than thirty years, given all the other confluence of events of the designation of that land.
Thank you, Dan. That's very helpful. Thank you. Other comments? Okay, who wants to step into? Perhaps make, Scott, would you put your, now remember, we have two. Before I get in trouble, we have two. We have the one for the SP and then we have one for its compliance with our, our comp plan. Is that correct, Councilman? Thank you. And I also think that, yes, Rick, I think we also had, I didn't see any heads. I saw heads that nodded in an affirmative about making the the change, the engineer to add the word professional.
So it was going to move approval of the permit if you are open to that.
Thank you very much.
So you want me to, are you open to that motion at this time?
Please, thank you.
Okay, I moved to recommend approval of SP two thousand and twenty-one zero 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 six Ivy Landfill Solar Facilities with the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Is there a second? Seconded by, is that a finger? I saw Daniel, Tim, did you put your finger up? Tim, Daniel. Seconded by Daniel, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, then may we have the roll on this particular motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Bailey.
And I, but apparently my trigger finger was too quick for the mute, it's on and off too fast. So hi.
All right, thank you.
Is that everyone? So that that has moved forward, so that, so that will move forward to our supervisors and then for the second piece, please. For whether or not this is proposed as in compliance with our comp plan, is there anyone who would care to make a motion one way or the other?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, which way, sir?
I move the planning commission find the proposed solar, solar utility used to be in compliance with Albemarle County's comprehensive plan.
Thank you very much. Is there a second? Tim, my partner, your finger go on. Tim, seconded by Tim, is there any further discussion? Please, madam, would you call, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Hi.
Mr. Keller.
Hi.
Mr. Randolph.
Hi.
Mr. Bivins.
Hi.
Ms. Moore.
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Young, so you've heard from our commissioners that on both plates, on both the special use permit and on the compliance with our comp plan that we approve those and we will be sending that recommendation along to our commissioner, to our supervisor. I think as it was advised to you, to being able to be, to speak to those issues that I think you heard us bring also perhaps change the image on your website.
Yes.
So that, so that that all sort of locks in there together might be something you might want to consider. I think you've heard that we've got a great project, we're in favor of your project and we look forward to hearing how you do when you report supervisors.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
And perhaps you can design a new ready killer lock. And perhaps you can design a new ready kilowatt with a with a solar tube to it. That would be kind of cool, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good evening. Are there committee reports? Tim, no, no, I see any other hands go. No. Okay, Charles, Mr. Rat, review.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a few updates for you. We had a board meeting after our last. Meeting on July twenty first, the board approved the Jefferson Mill Hydroelectric Project that came before this board, interesting project. That moved through and then during the daytime of that meeting, we had a presentation. From the planning division's natural resource manager, Kim Beasoli on the Stream Health Initiative Phase Two project. It was a lengthy work session with the board on that one. And I have invited her to come and present an overview of that to this planning commission to kind of keep y'all up and. Up to date with that information and that project as it continues to move forward. And that, if I may, I'd like to touch base on our schedule to see. I've realized that we have that scheduled as a work session for next week. And then we have a week off and then we have a public hearing scheduled on the twenty fourth of August and. Initially, we had planned for two public hearings. And now we will only have one. And so I was. Thinking for the sake of efficiency with time and your schedules of moving the Stream Health presentation to the twenty fourth so that. We can. You know, add a little more to that meeting than just one public hearing. So I wanted to gauge the commission's response on that and see if that sounded like something worthwhile. So that if we are going to get together, there's enough substance in that meeting for us other than just one public hearing.
Would you remind us what the other item would be, please?
Yeah, it is the Hought property day camp.
Okay.
It's one that Andy Reitelbach, our planner, that you all know very well at this point, will be bringing forward with us.
The commissioners, do we have counsel, do we have to take a vote to change our meeting? Fine, thank you, sir. Counsel, Tim.
So does that mean that there would be two weeks without meetings?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
So that our next meeting, our next time we would get together would be on the twenty fourth and not the tenth.
Correct.
How are we, folks? Are we okay? Do I see you're okay? You're okay? I'm looking for a thumb there. Oh, look at that.
I figured you might like an extra week off. Traveling and whatnot.
I like that. Mr. Randolph, am I seeing you smile for a reason?
Actually, given the fact I'm going to be away for three weeks in September, I would prefer to do as much work as possible in August, but. I hear the sentiment of the rest.
You will, you will, you will. We're just gonna pilot, you want to go back to our, we're gonna go back to our our intense COVID times when we were here till ten o'clock. Yeah, for that, does everybody remember those days?
Oh, Tim.
I know that pales, that pales in comparison to the supervisors. But for us, that was that was a hard workout on on Zoom. So if I don't see any, see no one except for Mr. Randolph who wants to work until, you know, he he leaves the building, then we'll.
I was gonna miss next week anyway, so. Yeah. I'm all for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and while I'm looking ahead to September, you know, I wondered if. You know, I know it's a tentative agenda, but it's, you know, it's a lot of crusade stuff going on. I didn't know if Charles was secretly. Trying to make me pay back that time, but since I've missed last week and I was gonna miss next week, so. You know, if that was happening, you know, now I'm technically not missing next week, just to.
There's a lot.
There's a lot going on in September.
So there is. It's gonna be a busier fall, I can guarantee that. And I will say we we will be bringing forward some updates and materials to share on the Ravanna River corridor plan. We had actually hoped to maybe get to a public hearing this month, but we're gonna postpone that a little bit. We'll still share the info with y'all. As well as with the board a little bit later and at that August meeting as well and then again with the board in early September. And we're trying to kind of coordinate our schedule on that project with our partners at the city. And some of the work they're doing as well so that we all kind of track on the same timeline.
Okay. So we're good about the scheduling piece and. When we get to that point, our next, I will adjourn, when we adjourn, we'll readjourn on August twenty fourth. Is there any old business? Any new business? Tim?
I'd like to. Sort of follow up on. The comments that that Rick and I were making about Ag and Forestal and whether we could. Memorialize that as some sort of. Recommendation that 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 sort of information start to be. Part of these presentations. I know that I know that. Scott has done that sometimes in the past, but. I I think that all of these are important, especially. As there's starting to be these discussions of the rural versus development areas, the percentages of each. And the value of land use taxation. So I think it would be helpful for us to see that. And I don't think it would be onerous to collect that information. The second one is about what we've just been looking at. And I wonder, not to mind. Charles's business, but I wonder if this is the kind of Bill Fritz. Couple of hour. Review of what the latest technologies are for the mounting. And whether there are ways that we can have more protection of our existing Pibon contours. Whether there's starting to be other technologies as opposed to this heavy handed. Civil engineering. Significant land movement. Soil movement, stacking of topsoil and creating detention ponds for solar farms. I I just, it seems to me that if if we're planting them in the rural areas as in effect agriculture. Then is there a way that they could be more sympathetic? As this one by definition had to be, although we know that there was significant. Manipulation to have the landfill there. But since we only have three at this point. And the last one was pretty significant in the contour manipulation. I wonder if we could. Maybe have a little bit of exploration by staff, senior staff, and then a report and then possibly we could. Think about suggesting that there be a policy change, Andy, that that would maybe put some other. Constraints in. And I realize that we now know that there is a financial cost trade off, but I think Rick very. Wisely pointed out that there could be significant cost savings at another point down the road, so. I'm not sure how they figure out their long term. Cost on these, but it might mean a reevaluation of that. So I don't want to make the meeting go much longer, but I do think that these are both important things. The rural always gets kind of short shift. Because they're the other kinds of issues are so pressing and this is an opportunity for us to reflect on. These two important sets of issues. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Charles, you made that.
Yeah, no, I'll say I appreciate you, your comments, Commissioner Keller, and have you say that. Mr. Fritz and Scott Clark are actually our internal team that we've put together to focus on these solar applications. They've been reviewing best practices. And looking at what we need to do as far as policy goes and ordinance requirements, things like that and. I believe we'll have some good opportunities to dive into some of that. With the ordinance overhaul that we have upcoming over the next few years. And that will be one of the more pressing items due to the number of applications that we're discussing internally already, so. As I pointed out, more coming.
I think I remember, it might not be the correct number, but there were. Sixteen locations where there's a substation. Adjacent to agriculturally zoned land in the county that would lend themselves to these. What did the the folks from Rappahannock tell us? The first ones to cherry pick in the county. So if we, if I don't believe this was one, so if there are. Three of those and I mean, two so far of the sixteen, I think we're going to see. The applications coming in adjacent to those very quickly. So it would be good to speed up this. Operation if we could. Thanks.
Daniel, did you want to? I saw your hand go up.
I was just saying it was it's one of the interesting somewhat trends. So I probably guessed track solar a little bit. Based on things, one of the interesting trends to your to your point, Commissioner Keller, is that. A lot of agricultural or forestal lands that have been planted as they're getting. Harvested. Some of them and we're seeing conversion of them to solar. As you think about it, because usually it takes twenty thirty years to grow new trees and. So I don't know if it's diversification, but they're they're switching over to a different asset than putting solar in on some of those lands. That were traditionally tree farm. So it's something for us to be aware of as as we'll see see that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we'll just take a small moment here before we go away and thank and to thank the anonymous person or the anonymous individual. Who sent some of us the the Color of Law book by Richard Rothstein. To also let that person know if he or she is listening that a number of our colleagues have already read it and sort of digested it and have it on their had it on their on their shelves. When you sent it to us, but that we appreciate the gesture and thank you for sending that along to us. So on that note, our next meeting will be on August the twenty fourth and so we unless there's someone who wants to. Say something before we do that, we stand adjourned at. At seven forty two. On this particular Tuesday evening. Be safe. If you're going camping, keep all of your digits. And make sure that you're wearing, make sure you wear, make sure you wear that stuff to keep the ticks away. Bye bye, everyone. See you then. See you next, see you in two weeks. There we go. Getting off, I'm getting off, turning off. There's Louise, there's Julian, there's this Charles, okay.
Us, just us.
Just us. Well, dude, you okay?